Good evening. Welcome to the September 24th, 2025 School Committee Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. We are going to start out with our Pledge of Allegiance, and we have our two student representatives, Stevie and Yasmin, that are going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start off tonight with open public comment. And I'm sorry, we have our first speaker coming up. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, so we have eight people signed up for open public comment. First on here is Tom Gill. We are going to about a minute, is that okay, to stay within the five-minute timeframe?
I'm like close to three.
It's a five-minute, we have five minutes for open public comment, but we have eight people signed up.
Sorry, people.
Five minutes per person.
If you have a similar message or you want to bring a group up, we can do that too, but...
Yeah, I'll just lead off.
Okay, we'll do the best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Foxborough. I'm Mr. Gill, Thomas J., 210 High Plains Street, Walpole. I'm a grade eight civics and U.S. government teacher at the Hearn Middle School. This is my 26th year. I'm also the Foxborough Education Association President, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the FEA to introduce a new Spotlight Feature Series we're going to roll out this year at our meetings. We're calling it "We Just Thought You Should Know." And this is going to be a series of anecdotes provided to us by our classroom teachers and our program teachers that speak to the critical value that educational assistance bring to our classrooms each and every day. I'll start. At the end of the first week of school is when educational assistants get their schedules, and into my room came my Mediterranean mother, Ms. Pauline Volkzakiks. I'm butchering that name, she's got two Xs in it. Ms. V, she's known as, and when she entered the room, I saw her briefly, and then I didn't see her because six students descended upon her. I couldn't see her. The three comments I heard all started with OMGs. "Oh, my God, Ms. V, I'm so happy you're in our civics class this year." "Oh, my God, Ms. V, I'm so happy that you're going to help me learn again this year." And "Oh, my God, Ms. V, I missed you so much this summer." When they finally peeled off, she was just a giant smile, and I'm sitting there saying, "Relationships? Check. They can now steam ahead with learning." She's already got that connection with them. And she just brings so much value and expertise from her decades of work in Milford Public Schools. So I began to think about, well, how are we valuing her value? And right now, we're looking at a potential COLA increase for our EAs in year one of the proposed contract, which amounts to just under $20 and just under $30 per pay period. If we round that up and break it down weekly, it's $10 and $15 pre-tax. These people won't be able to buy a cup of coffee daily with this COLA raise. So we have to, and I know we can do better, and we all get that everything is tied to limited municipal finances. We understand that. But we also know that you're going to get it. Late spring, early summer, FIFA World Cup revenue. We're all footy fans now, people. The predictions are staggering. $1.1 billion for New England, $800 million for Massachusetts, and $60 million in increased tax revenue for districts and municipalities directly impacted by the event. We're the epicenter. So we're going to try to get ahead of it a little bit this year and ask you tonight, when that money starts pouring in, to please appropriate a significant portion of those funds to the creation and establishment of an educational assistant stabilization fund and/or a general education stabilization fund, akin to the brilliant maneuver the community pulled off last year when it established the Special Education Stabilization Fund. Why do we need these two additional funds? Because the needs presented in every class, in every level, in every building, every day, require it. So now we know that we have to do better, and we can see in a few months, we can do better. Thank you.
My name is Alan Charvin. I live in North Attleboro at 56 Broadway. I'm currently a seventh-grade mathematics teacher at the Hearn Middle School. This is my 25th year teaching math at the Hearn Middle School in Foxborough. I previously worked over 20 years in the private sector as a research engineer. I am thrilled with the decision I made to move on from research engineering to the teaching profession. It has been and continues to be a very rewarding profession to educate the youth of Foxborough and have the opportunity to spend about seven hours a day with them. I am here today speaking to you as a member of the Foxborough Education Association. Our association represents all the teachers and paraprofessionals who take care of and educate the children of Foxborough. I'm here to inform the residents of Foxborough that we have not been able to agree with the school superintendent and the school committee members and the town officials on a new contract and continue to work under the previous expired contract. I am here today to let the residents of Foxborough know that the school superintendent, school committee members, and town officials have not, in our opinion, been negotiating in good faith. They have not offered anything close to a fair-paid parental leave benefit that is in line with the current conditions in the year 2025, like those offered to most American workers and to most workers in the free world. We want the residents of Foxborough to know that the latest offer includes a very small amount of time, two weeks, and then three weeks of paid parental leave. However, it is only for the birthing parent and not for the non-birthing parent. I repeat, not for the non-birthing parent, and it is not for adopting parents. I repeat, not for adopting parents. The irony that caretakers of the Foxborough's children are not being offered the paid opportunity to care for their newborn and/or adopted children during this most critical time of their life is striking to me. We are asking the residents of Foxborough to let the school superintendent, the school committee members, and the town government know that you are in favor of offering our teachers and paraprofessionals a fair-paid parental leave benefit, like most workers in America and Foxborough receive. The cost for this benefit compared to the nominally $45 million school budget is so minimal that it is really shocking that a fair benefit has not been offered to us, especially given the fact that it is the year 2025, not 10 years ago when the Commonwealth passed parental leave legislation. I'm also here to inform the residents of Foxborough and the town that the latest cost-of-living adjustments offered to the teachers and paraprofessionals is incredibly low compared to inflation numbers. It's nominally an 8% increase over the three-year life of the contract after the previous three-year contract of 5.5% cost-of-living adjustment over the three years of the life of that contract. So over the last three years, combined with the next three years, the cost-of-living adjustments would be nominally 13.5%, even though inflation over the past six years has been nominally 27%. This is a net decrease of about 23% for our educators. This is shocking that in the town of Foxborough, with all its resources, the educators who have been taken care of and continue to take care of Foxborough's children for about one-third of the day are being expected by the school superintendent, school committee members, and town officials to have their standard of living reduced by such a large amount. We want the residents of Foxborough to know that the FEA membership is not asking for the full amount of the inflation numbers, but are seeking, are asking for a contract fairly, which accounts for inflation and keeps up with the surrounding towns like Sharon. We also want the residents of Foxborough to know that the money is available in the town budget. In fact, at the most recent negotiation session, the school superintendent, school committee members, and town officials informed us that it is not that the money is not available, it is that they are not willing to use it on our cost-of-living adjustments. We also want you to know that this most, that this most recent July, that the Commonwealth and Massachusetts state government provided the towns with increased funding for education because the state legislators know that towns have needed more funding to provide reasonable cost-of-living adjustments to teachers and the paraprofessionals, given the high inflationary pressures. In fact, the town of Foxborough's Chapter 7 money was increased in July, just in July, by $387,000. This is money that the school superintendent, school committee members, and town officials did not plan for, but now have for teachers and paraprofessional salaries. Yet, the school committees, the superintendent, the school committee members, and town officials have not increased the cost-of-living adjustments since the last offer in May of 2025. I repeat, the town is receiving an additional $387,000 and is refusing to use it for the state's intended use for paraprofessionals and teachers' salaries COLAs to account for inflation. This is shocking to me and disingenuous of the school superintendent, school committee members, and town officials. In closing, I am requesting that the residents of Foxborough notify school superintendent, school committee members, and town officials that they want them to negotiate in good faith with the FEA and offer a fair contract that includes a fair-paid parental leave benefit and a fair cost-of-living adjustments for the teachers and paraprofessionals who work in our schools and care for our children one-third of the day. Email them, call them, text them, however you can contact them. Also, we are requesting that you tell your friends and neighbors and other residents of Foxborough to do the same. Let this be a grassroots effort that causes the school superintendent, school committee members, and town officials to be fair to our educators. Thank you, and God bless America and the town of Foxborough.
Danielle Barrows.
How are you today?
Good.
I'm Danielle Barrows. I work at the Barlow Elementary.
Tell us, just give us your address where you live.
Now in Granite Street in Foxborough.
Okay, Foxborough, okay.
Yep. This is for the EAs. We are not appropriately staffed to help our highest-need children. We are not adequately able to give them the individual attention, need, and care they are required. When we are able, given new staff, there are never appropriate, appropriately trained, training, oh, sorry, opportunities for them. There is no time, and there isn't enough staff for the classroom teachers to support others in training and learning opportunities. We are being grouped and compared to the general ed assistants in the classroom when we are doing so much more than we are expected to do. We are making ourselves available for emotional and physical needs for the children. We are de-escalating emotional and physical dysregulated behavior while also attending to other students and making sure they are safe. We are what makes it possible for our students to do integrated into their gen ed classrooms. We give them, we give these children the opportunities to be included with their peers as much as possible. We are the behavioral and emotional support and guidance for our students. We also share our knowledge about our students with those around us, peers, other educators. We help the gen ed population feel comfortable being around and exposed to our students. We teach them how to be accepting to our students. We provide daily living skills, things that may be very small to gen ed family are huge to ours. We have students who have been able to use the bathroom for the first time, drink or eat in a cafeteria for the first time. We work on communication skills, such as one of our students who has learned to ask for help using his speaking device. We help these children reach goals that families never thought they would see in their children as it's satisfaction of helping these children and their goals and learning opportunities to keep us coming to work every day. Olympics, bringing fourth grade and having them work with our children in teaching them sports, teamwork, and acceptance. The things that we do, are asked to do, are far greater than what we are acknowledged for. We fight for our students' education and learning opportunities. We are willing to put ourselves in harm's way to protect our students. We create a safe and comfortable learning environment for our students. We pay attention to the specific disabilities and learning goals and strive to give them the best education we possibly can. We show up to work every day because we are, we have formed strong bonds with our students, and we thrive off their success. We give these children the same care and attention that their own families would provide at home. We, but we have to think about our own families at home. We work so very hard, and it's very disheartening to hear that through our hard work, we get so little respect and compensation. We don't want to give up our families on our students and all the hard work we've put into our job to have to leave because we can't afford to provide for our own families with such little pay. But also, at the same time, I'm not going to lie, all these teachers, some of them have taught some of you, or maybe others that were younger than you. In order for them to have the jobs that they have, if it wasn't for them, where would they be? To me, it's like, they need, in order for them to be able to pay for their bills, they need to be able, they have to have higher pay. In order for you guys to have the jobs you have, you needed them to teach you that, right? So don't you think that they should get paid more?
Thank you. We have to move on to the next person. Thank you. We are pretty significantly over the time limit, so if we can, if we can make it, like, try to make our statements as concise as we can, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Burdos, Dr. Barrows, members of the school committee, and the Foxborough community members. My name is Carrie Hoag, and I am a veteran teacher who has worked in the Foxborough Public School system for 33 years. I am currently a second-grade teacher at the Taylor Elementary School. I am proud to be an educator. I absolutely love what I do, and the commitment I have given to the Foxborough Public Schools is endless. My main goal is for the children and the families. I am also a representative of the union. I'm a member of the bargaining team who is currently attempting to negotiate a fair contract for our teachers and educational assistants with the administrators and school committee members of the Foxborough Public School Department. I'm here tonight to respectfully emphasize the critical need for a fair, timely, and transparent agreement for our teachers' educational assistance. These negotiations are not just about salaries or benefits. They are about recognizing the vital role of educators and the support staff and the success of our students and the entire school community. As a veteran teacher and a member of the bargaining team, I would like to address the committee and encourage you to show us the respect and dignity we deserve by ratifying our contract and recognizing the hard work and passion that the teachers and the educational assistants of the Foxborough Public Schools dedicate every single day to the students and the families. We put our heart and our soul into the classroom to educate, inspire, and nurture the future. Teachers and assistants are on the front lines every day. They provide academic instruction, emotional support, and stability, often increasingly in challenging conditions. Our jobs have changed significantly as the emotional and academic needs of our two students have changed over the years. Ensuring fair contracts is not just a matter of compensation, but of respect, retention, and long-term sustainability of our schools. We believed at the start of our bargaining process that with open dialogue, mutual respect, and a shared commitment to the students and families of Foxborough, that we could reach agreements that would be fair, equitable, and reflective of our incredible value educators and educational assistants bring to our district. However, the current negotiations are not going smoothly. Despite what community members may read on the district's website, I am here to inform you that the teachers and educational assistants are currently working without a contract. We are working under the old contract. Despite going into mediation to try and settle our contracts, the negotiations team sat at our last meeting for almost two hours, waiting for administration to address the pending proposals that were on the table. They came to the meeting unprepared, and valuable time to try and ratify our contract was wasted. We've been prepared, professional, and our team is taking negotiations extremely seriously. However, the district's lack of preparedness has been a consistent pattern throughout the process, and we are tired of the lack of respect that we deserve. I wanted to highlight a few of the proposals that we are seeking. We are seeking meaningful salary increases for our teachers and a living wage for our educational assistants, which will address the current COLA benchmarks and the 14% increase in health insurance. Our educators and educational assistants are the backbone of student success. They go above and beyond daily, providing instruction, support, mentorship, and care that extends well beyond the classroom hours. It's essential that their compensation reflects both the valuable value they bring to our students and families and the financial realities we face. We are asking for a fair-paid parental leave that recognizes all family units, not just that of a birthing parent, which is how our current contract language reads. The negotiations committee wants new language put into the contract to reflect that the district will provide equitable parental leave for all eligible employees, inclusive of birthing, non-birthing, adoptive, and foster parents, regardless of the gender and the family structure. Another proposal, which costs the district $0, requests a 30-minute duty-free lunch period at the elementary school level. For approximately 29 years, teachers at the elementary school level had equitable 30-minute lunch periods. Then, without any discussion or notice, our lunch period was changed to 25 minutes. We respectfully proposed, very early on in the negotiations process, that we would be given back our full 30 minutes of lunch, which was initially agreed on by administration during the negotiations, but then it was retracted at the next meeting. This is not bargaining in good faith, and we deserve better. Teaching is physically and emotionally demanding. A 30-minute duty-free lunch allows teachers the necessary time to rest, recharge, attend to personal needs, like eating our lunch, using the restroom, or simply taking a mental break, or to have a discussion with a colleague. This proposal does not cost the district any money, yet it continues to be rejected. In closing, we have come to the table in good faith with the shared goal of building a contract that reflects the value, commitment, and expertise we bring to this institution every single day. We want the community to be aware of what's currently happening with negotiations. We are not asking for more than what is fair, and we are demanding respect. Now is the time for action. We are prepared to stand united, we are stronger, and we are better together. We demand a fair contract that respects our hard work and dedication, protects our rights, and invests in the future of the children and families of Foxborough. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, we have four more individuals signed up to speak, but I have to, I have to limit it to a minute per person at this point, please, because we're 20 minutes over, beyond our agenda at this point. I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Okoin, and I live at 94 Mechanic Street in Foxborough. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the educational assistants in their quest to improve wages and fair contract, which they absolutely deserve. I'm a mom of a 33-year-old developmentally-delayed son with autism who attended the Foxborough Public Schools until the age of 22. It began as a difficult journey for my husband and I, fighting with the town over an appropriate program. After spending a year or so in a private placement, Foxborough did the right thing and developed a program, hiring a teacher who specialized in autism and hiring educational assistants to provide a program for my son and other students, who are challenging. My son, as he moved on and many new students moved in, more teachers and ed assistants were hired to support these precious students who have a different way of learning. Foxborough was moving in the right direction. I'm not sure that we still are headed in the right direction and are taking care of these very special students. As an elementary wellness teacher in Foxborough for 26 years, I had worked with many ed assistants, and it was crucial to integrate these children, this special population, with their typical peers, whether it was in the gym, whether it was art, or in the music room, it could have been the lunchroom, or even on a playground. Without enough educational assistance, these things do not happen.
Can I just give you a heads-up? We're at about a minute and a half. Can I just maybe 10, 15 more seconds drop up, please?
Almost done.
You can submit it for the record to Jamie, too.
What could it do going into a record when no one hears? I just, I just really feel very strongly about this because after leaving my retirement in 2019, I left for a couple of years, worked elsewhere, and I came back, and things were, I feel even worse, that programs were not covered, they didn't have enough assistance. It was awful to see what was going on. Children weren't integrated, and again, I know they're working to try to do that, but with, if you don't have enough staff, you can't integrate these kids. My son still walks through town because he was integrated, and he sees people that say hi to him and know who he is, and it makes a huge difference for him. In closing, my last year in 219, I was asked to spend two weeks, that next school year in September, with a child who moved in unexpectedly. I was floored. It was eye-opening for me. As a teacher who worked for 26 years, those were the most difficult two weeks of my life, being there five and a half hours a day with a one-to-one and seeing what ed assistants go through on a daily basis. I don't know how they do it, because I know if I had stayed in that position, I wouldn't have lasted, but they deserve a fair contract and increased wages, no doubt.
We have Wendy Chiamassino, is that correct? Sorry if I said it wrong.
It's okay.
And again, if we can try to limit it, just we're way over, sorry.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
I'm Wendy Chiamassino. I work at Foxborough High School. I've been there off and on since 2007. Off because I worked until the end of my pregnancy in 2012, and on an ed assistant salary, I would have ended up owing for childcare instead of actually making a profit at the end of the week. I had to put my career on hold and wait until my son hit kindergarten age to return to work at the high school. Through that time, I've had my own children go through the high school, and I can't say enough for the faculty. I'm proud to live in this town. I'm proud to work in this town, but at the end of the day, I don't think I should be faced with my job or my child. It's just, we don't make enough to survive. We're overworked. We're exhausted. To be honest, I wrote a bunch of other things, but I'm just speaking from the heart because I think we're burnt out. There's not enough staff. Nobody wants to take a job because we don't pay enough, and we can only handle so much before we all break. And that's all. I hope I got it down to you. Thank you.
Darren, Darren James, I went over you, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you to the committee for extending the time to make room for all these speakers, so I'll be very brief. I'm aware that the school system makes a five-year strategic plan that includes things such as buses, computer upgrades, carpeting, internet, and various other physical plant activities to make sure our schools are successful. I'm not aware of it, but I would encourage the school system, if you do not, to include an employee five-year strategic plan. Right now, currently, the school committee and superintendent and assistant superintendent, you are, whether you wish to or not, partially working on a three-year strategic employee improvement plan to make you stay and become a district of destination and to be competitive with your surrounding towns. Regardless of socioeconomic backgrounds of these towns surrounding you, you are competing with them, you are competing with the Joneses next door, to get quality employees, to have them apply for the job in the first place, to have them go through the interview process, and to have them say, "Yes, I want to take this job and work here." In order to get that, you need to have competitive benefits and wages that go commensurate with what other towns in the surroundings are doing. This is just a fact of life. Some towns are richer than us, I acknowledge that. Some towns are poorer than us, we all know this. But you must basically contemplate this. Every employee that says yes to you is a potential future teacher who might use the education assistant position to become a teacher. Can, ultimately, you want highly qualified education assistant and teachers. The key to that, to get them highly qualified, is to hire them, retain them, and ideally get them when they're young, when their contracts are the least expensive and it's the most financial benefit to the district. In order to retain them, you need to be competitive with other individuals. Please consider a five-year employee strategic plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Last, we have Peter Charbonneau. Sorry, I didn't ask for everyone's address. It's a lot. So if you could just give us your name and address, please.
Certainly, Peter Charbonneau.
Thank you.
223 East Street in Foxborough. I've given every member of the committee a packet that I intend to submit for the record, and I won't cover that now because of time. I would like to recognize the recent national banner recognition for the Unified School District. Thanks in no small part to everyone behind me, the integration that they have done with all of our students, with the mainstream students, the anti-bullying campaign. My student, Killian, is in third grade. He's been at the Burl since March of 2020. Actually, the day he started was the day COVID lockdowns started. And at least eight or 10 of the individuals behind me have been responsible for his day-to-day care at that facility, and I do mean care. Education, yes. Physical attention, yes. But his neurodiversity concerns, they are all over. The physical concerns and safety for all of our students, the integration, the anti-bullying, everything that they do is 100% of every second of every day with these special ed students in class. They don't get a break. Last year, my son's class had four students and three assistants. He was able to integrate with the mainstream second-grade class daily, multiple times a day. He became the mayor of the school. He would ask for a walk break on his communication device. He's the one they were talking about, that they got him to use his communication device. And he would ask to go for a walk, and he would go down the hallways, and he would poke his head into a classroom, and they would all say, Killian! And he would wave and go back. He didn't want to go in and interact with them, that's not his comfort zone, but he understood the recognition. This year, there are seven students in his classroom with four assistants, one of which is on loan from Foxborough High School, and he has to go back at the end of next week. The newly posted position has not been filled yet, so there will be seven students with three assistants, with a new special ed teacher to boot. She is fantastic. We love everything that the Burl has done. The resources are limited. They are getting more limited. In just my time at the Burl, I'm just speaking from what I have seen, last year was a banner year. I don't know why, I don't know what happened. We had more resources for this type of thing, and it went fantastically. This year, it seemed like the wheels fell off the bus. There were new students in the classroom that weren't anticipated, there were staff that were not anticipated, the staff needs. And so the integration with his mainstream third-grade class this year is not happening at the same level that his integration with the second-grade class happened because can't break away from the classroom because there's too many students of need, and those assistants have to be with the students. They can't break away to bring my son to his third-grade class and get the integration that he needs. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you all. If anyone has anything they would like to submit to Jamie to put with, you know, for informational purposes with the package, she'll certainly collect it. So thank you all for being here, we appreciate you. And we're going to move on with our meeting. So the next thing on our agenda is the approval of minutes. I have packaged here regular meeting minutes from June 17, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting, school committee regular meeting minutes from June 17, 2025.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that would be 4-0-0. Thank you very much. All right, next we have policy subcommittee meeting from July 17.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the policy subcommittee meeting from July 17, 2025.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? I'd like to make a comment. Thank you to my policy subcommittee for meeting on July 17. Thank you very much for your work and effort, it's much appreciated. All in favor of approving these minutes? And that's 4-0-0. Thank you very, very much. All right, now we have an executive session from July 21, 2024. It's 2025, so we'll make that change. July 21, 2025, executive session meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the July 21, 2025 executive session.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or discussion? I believe we just have to just say we're with the correction.
With the correct year.
All right, so all in favor of approving the minute meetings with the small correction? And that would be 4-0-0. Thank you very much. Now we have the special meeting from July 21, 2025 minutes.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the special meeting from July 21, 2025.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor? And that would be 4-0-0. Thank you very much. Now we have another policy subcommittee, August 12, from August 12, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the policy subcommittee meeting from August 12, 2025.
Second.
All right, any further questions, comments, or discussion? Again, thank you very much for meeting. And this one was located at the Boyd &amp; Library, so we appreciate your efforts on this. All in favor of approving the minutes? And that would be 4-0-0. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. We're going to move along to Foxborough High School overnight travel. We have Dr. Donovan to tell us about this.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present these trips. This is the first of two batches of trips to propose this year. The first, this first group includes a trip to Italy, run by teachers in the English and World Language Department. This is very similar to trips that have been approved before to England and France over the last two years. The DECA trip is an annual, the two DECA trips are annual. The first is to Boston, and the second is, this year, the national competition is in Atlanta. Students, we generally have two to three students who qualify for that, so that's that trip. The cross-country meets in New York are pending students qualifying. So it's not a guarantee that we'll have a relay team or individual athletes that qualify, but we wanted to, based on the timing of the two trips, put those include there. The same is true for Winter Cheer to Florida, which has been an annual trip for at least the last four years that I have been here. And the same is for wrestling. There's an invitational and Lowell, the All-State Championship in New England. Generally, both All-State and New England have been out of state or really close to the New Hampshire State border, and so the teams have tried to stay overnight in lodgings just to be easier on the athletes. So I'm just asking for your support for those trips.
Awesome. I will entertain a motion unless anyone has any questions or comments for Dr. Donovan.
I make a motion to approve the Foxborough High School overnight travel as presented by Dr. Donovan.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? I just like to say, go Warriors. I hope they all get qualified for those trips. All in favor? And that would be 4-0-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your support.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. We're going to go next to Dr. Bertos for the superintendent update.
So we are well on our way into the school year. We had a great opening. We had a number of open houses in the last couple of weeks, and we had a great turnout from our parents. Really, a lot of energy, the amount of work and effort that went in from our teachers and everyone to get the rooms ready and to be able to have a successful open house. It was awesome. The SROs would like to give a special thank you for them for doing a presentation at the middle school during the open house, the two evenings as well. They did a very brief kind of overview of the lessons that they do for the students that have to do with social media, school safety, all of that, but it was really kind of a highlight of what's done within the classroom. So thank you for the SROs attending all of our open houses this year, which was something different, so we really appreciated having them there for those. Our enrollment for, as of today, is at 2,458 students. That's nine students less than where we were when we ended school in June. We are pretty consistent from year to year. We see the elementary slowly starting to trickle up maybe a little bit, middle school holding steady, and then high school, kind of that slight. We've had that bubble over the course of the last number of years where we've seen it kind of go up, hit the middle school, and then it's starting to kind of ebb and flow back. But overall, our district enrollment has stayed pretty consistent. The official, the Department of Education numbers, that's our October 1, when we report that, but just, I think it's always good to kind of get an idea of where we are at the beginning of the school year. Also, at the beginning of the school year is our student registration verification update time period. Just, that was due last week, but want to remind families to complete those because it's really important for emergency contact information updating, if there's, you know, phone numbers or any other emergency contacts that have changed. So that information went out from each of the principals. So if they have not completed that, we ask that they please do complete that because it really is important in having that information. Also, there's information about laptops as far as, you know, reminding parents and kids, you know, no stickers on them, but at the same time, there's insurance coverage, too, if they're wanting to purchase that. That has gone down as far as in price for any kind of damage that might happen, and that's $30 for them to purchase that additional information, insurance, and that has been also communicated out to families. Clubs and sports and activities, those are all in full swing. You can see everyone out on the fields and activities in the buildings, which is really exciting. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that we did have the senior site visit from MSBA for the Taylor School. So this was their, this is the fourth submission of the statement of interest that we've submitted. In 2022, we did have a senior site visit when they came to really look at the building, see the level of need, look at the spaces, and, you know, any of the things that we've done to keep the building up to date. So to have them come back in 2025, that's encouraging. Out of the submissions, they did say that they had 126 total submissions this year, which is down from what they've had in years past. Out of those 126, 27 of them are for the core programs, like when we think about the Burl and the project that we had there. That 27 accounts for 21 districts. Some districts put in more than one building project. But with our visit, when they came, we discussed the building, we looked at enrollment projections, the plan. But one of the comments that really stayed with me after the meetings and the tours and everything is that it was really, and I quote them, "very refreshing for them to come to see that we're realistic and that many districts are looking to completely tear down buildings and start brand-new." And financially, that's very difficult, and a lot of towns don't support that, where we're looking to do what we did at the Burl. That was something that they commented on. So we're hopeful, we don't know, we won't hear until the end of November, beginning of December. Their board meeting is on December the 12th, and that's when they make recommendations of who's invited into the grant program. So we're hoping, fourth time's going to do it this time, but we won't know until December 12th. And then I know it was mentioned earlier, and I just wanted to again congratulate the Burl and the Ahern on receiving the national banner recognition, which is awesome and a testament to all of the hard work that so many people, our teachers and our staff, do to have that recognition. It is two out of 17 schools in Massachusetts that were receiving that particular recognition. So, well done, it's awesome, and it's really a testament to the hard work that takes place.
All right, is that it? I think that's it. I will tell you, just as a commentary on your announcement, this is my first year as a collegiate parent without a child in the district. I didn't miss the paperwork at the back to school, but it is important, so make sure if you haven't filled it out, you fill it out. Anyone else have any questions or comments for Dr. Bertos? Thank you, we appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on now. Very sad, we don't have a teaching and learning highlight, but we do have two fresh new seniors here. Stevie Straighthand and Yasmeen Baghosa, they're going to do a little update. Thank you.
Okay. So to start off, we have homecoming this weekend. It is going to be on the 27th from 7:00 to 9:00 in the cafeteria. Because of that, this week is Spirit Week at the high school. Today was Matching Day. Tomorrow is going to be Decades Day, and then it is Blue and Gold for Friday. Coming up, we have a bunch of college visits happening, provided by the Guidance Department. We have Wheaton College on the 25th, and then in October, we have Bryant University, Regis College, and UMaine coming, as well as Framingham State. And then, beginning on the 30th, we're going to have college fairs during all of the lunch blocks in the media center. Those are also hosted by Guidance. And then which college it is every day is going to be posted in Guidance.
We also had a football game last week where we won by 58 to 0 against Panham. That was an amazing game, it was really like nothing. We have our homecoming game this Friday against KP. Hopefully another win, maybe by 58. Also, we have the forms for the students to complete about your diploma, how you want it to be written. So if you haven't done that, please do. You can find this in Mr. Donovan's newsletter or on Teams if you're a student.
That's all we have for today.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Anyone have any questions or comments? Thank you both very much, we appreciate it. We're going to go to the next item on our agenda, which is the unexpired school committee term fulfillment. I have to deliver some unfortunate news. As many of you may know, Chelsea McHugh recently decided to resign from the Foxborough School Committee. While this is disappointing, I can assure everyone that we will be taking immediate steps to fill that seat as soon as possible. The process for filling the seat begins with a two-week period of time for the interested individuals to submit their names to our community inbox. Just to clarify, you just go to Foxborough School Committee, Community Inbox, it's right there. We will be holding interviews for all candidates, and ultimately, a combined vote of the select board and the school committee will appoint the successful candidate who will serve until the May election. Anyone have any questions or comments on this?
Does the select board sit in on the interviews, or is that just...?
That to be determined. The last time we had a vacancy, the school committee performed as a subcommittee and held interviews, but that's to be determined. Yeah, so. We'll know more, and we'll probably make another announcement at the next meeting and give like a small window, like, you know, a few more days for submissions or something like that. And we're going to be navigating this process with the select board, as I mentioned, but also with the town clerk. So, well, it's a work in progress, so we'll figure it out. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're going to move on to the 2025-2026 Foxborough School Committee Superintendent Operating Protocols. So, Dr. Bertos.
So this is something that you started a number of years ago as far as the protocols to have in place, and it's something that school committee signs off on, as well as myself. And it really is the expectations and the goals and the interests that are outlined there. So these, if you remember, at our Goals Workshop with MASCE, we revisited these in July, and so you just have the work that you did in July with MASCE to update those. There really weren't a lot of changes from July on these. They're pretty standard operating protocols.
All right, and you do need a vote on this by the school committee, correct?
Yes.
All right.
I make a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Foxborough School Committee Superintendent Operating Protocols as presented.
A second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion on this? All right, all in favor? And that would be 4-0-0. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to the FY '25 Year End Budget Report. Ms. Karen Sheridan.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to present the FY '25 Year End Budget to Date Report. This is the expenditures through June 30 of 2025. So just having completed my first full year in Foxborough, I have to say I was happy to see a budget that allowed the school district to meet their financial goals for the year. the year and that the resources were allocated effectively. This truly showed to me the support of the town for this budget. In October, I will be back with the FY '26 Quarterly Report, the first one for FY '26, but tonight is the year-end for FY '25, okay? The first slide will show you the budget for FY '25, which was $42 million, $42,92,742. The next slide. So the budget for this year, we expended $41,037,169, encumbrances of 767,254, leaving us a year-end balance returned to the town to free cash of $288,319. 99.32% of the budget was expended, and it should be noted that the balance at the year end being returned to free cash has continued to reduce through the years. I did a history, look back at your history, and from FY '20 to FY '25, this was the lowest amount. The other thing, I do not anticipate to see funds being returned to this extent in the future. It also reminded, a good time to remind the Committee that any funds that are returned to the town at year-end do often benefit the schools. The CIP, the capital, utilizes the free cash to give the capital expenditures that the school have. Last night, we did have a capital meeting, which did support two of the mini buses that we need to replace that are going to, that really have a lot of mileage and having some difficulties with mechanics. So we had to go to capital to get requests for two of the mini buses. So in order to continue and transport our students from home to school. So this capital request will be on the October Town Meeting, and that is set for October 27th. All right. The next slide. Here you'll see the budget, which is broken down by the Department of Education Function Codes. So in red, you'll see the instructional services. The instructional services should always be the largest part of your budget, which it is in Foxborough. Right now, for this fiscal year, it was 74.77% of the budget. This category is direct student services, the expenditures, and that includes instructional staff, professional development, instructional materials, guidance, psychological service, textbooks, technology, all the things that really are the meat of instructing your students. On the second largest would be pupil services, and that is 8.9% of this budget. It includes nursing services, transportation, the lunchroom managers, athletics, student activities, school security, the resource officer. Next, we would have the operation and maintenance of plants, which is 8.71%. And here you have the custodial services, your heat, your utilities, your grounds and buildings, and your technology infrastructure. District leadership and administration is only 3.67% of the budget, and that would be the School Committee expenditures, the superintendent, the finance, and the district-wide technology. The programs with other school districts, 3.44% of the budget, and that's the added district tuition for the special education students that attend like private schools or collaborative. Benefits and fixed charges, which would be employee separation costs, is only 0.38% of the budget, and fixed assets for this year is 0.14%, as we had to do a replacement for a truck for the facilities. The next slide. Here you can see it as a pie, and you can really see it here with the large piece of the pie of your budget going directly to instructional services. If you look at the red and the green of the pie, that is your instruction and your pupil services, and those two categories together make 83.67 of your school district expenditures. So truly, the budget is the majority is going directly to the services for students. Go to the next slide. Here, I think it's really important to see how much salaries account in this budget. So the salaries for the FY '25 budget are 85% is payroll with 15% expenditures. It's a really large piece of your pie, and it's important to note that when you have budgets that have really high percentage of payroll, it can have some challenges with regard to that, because you've got to remember that each year, you've got your increases, you've got your steps, your lanes, you've got your educational advances in your salary, as well as the cost of living adjustments. So the higher that percentage of payroll is in your budget, the more difficult your budgets are going to be. So the budgets with high percentages of payroll in them, they leave, they don't leave as much room for the increases that you're going to have in a district. So you've got to remember that you've got inflation that hits your pocketbook at home, it also hits the pocketbook here in the schools. You've got utility increases, you've got the added district tuition for the special education students, which increases every year, you've got transportation expenditures, various expenditures that also are part of the budget. And then the other part, on the other side, is just to give you an idea of how the budget breaks down versus general education and special education. And for FY '25, it was 74.06% is general education and 25.94% is special education. Slide seven, just hold on one second. Here you've got the circuit breaker. It's important to note that the circuit breaker funds can only be used for special education expenditures, and the district utilizes these funds to pay the added districts, some added district tuition costs for special education students, for the private schools, and for the collaboratives. So at FY '24, we had a carryover of $1,367,286. We had reimbursements in the amount of $1,581,481. And the added district tuition that was applied toward the circuit breaker was $1,367,287, leaving us a year-end balance of $1,581,481. This year-end balance is a little higher than when you anticipated when you were doing your budget, and that is due to additional circuit breaker funds that we received very late in the year due to a supplemental payment from the Department of Education, which increased the transportation reimbursement rate from what they had originally given us, which was 47.46% of reimbursement, and they went to the highest rate allowed, which is 75%. So that is great news for the district. We've got a little bit more of circuit breaker, which allowed us to have a little bit higher year-end balance in that fund. The expenditures allocated this circuit breaker, they aligned with your district past practice of budgeting. So in circuit breaker, it gives you two years to expend these funds. So you get these funds in in one year, and you have one year, two years to spend it. So really good budgeting is to take that one year that you get in and use that amount as your budget for the next year. And that is what Foxborough has been doing through the years, and that's a really good past practice, which I think is a great budgeting practice to continue. So that is what we have done in FY '25. The school district ended the year with 30 added district students. That's about it for that one. On the next slide, this slide shows some additional funds that were generated from the school district, and these funds go directly to the town receipts. So there's various sources of revenue that generate the receipts that enable the town to allocate the fiscal year budgets, and these are just two of these sources. So the school has school-based Medicare program, and that offers, the district's an opportunity to receive federal funds to offset costs for providing certain Medicaid-covered direct services in a school setting. So for this year, the school district received $66,163 in Medicaid reimbursements. We also received from the Department of Ed homeless transportation. The Department of Ed provides this revenue, which is subject to appropriation each year. So it's not something that's really easy to budget on how much you're going to get. But for FY '25, the town of Foxborough received $29,562. So there's additional revenues that went to the town for their receipts is $95,725. Next, we're going to be going to revolving funds. So each year, the school district does try to utilize all their funds and funding resources when they're doing their budgets, as well as search for additional funding sources. Revolving funds and grants are some examples of this. So in this slide, you're seeing the revolving funds. So the revolving funds here that you have are the ones that have the budget offsets. And on this slide, you see the balance to date as of 6:30, the budget offset that was in FY '25, and the budget offset that we have for FY '26 budget. And you can see from the balances at year-end that we do still have the amounts in the revolving funds to be able to use them for the offsets that we have in FY '26. You can also see that we have increased some of the budget offsets for FY '26. And on the notes there, you can see some of the things that the budget offsets expenditures. So for the athletic revolving, for example, it's used for some supplies, some coaching type-ins, you've got some utilities that we use. The preschool tuition is for the coordinator, and it was partial salary in '25, but in ' '26, we have allocated the full salary of the preschool coordinator. Also, some fuel, and like we indicated before, the circuit breaker is used for the special education added district tuitions. For the preschool, I just wanted to give a note that with the current balance in the preschool revolving and the projections that we have done for FY '26, we believe we can keep the preschool tuitions the same for FY '26. We have kept them that way. They are lower than surrounding towns. However, we felt like it wasn't the time to do that, we still have the funding in there to cover it, but it will be something that we will be monitoring for the future to make sure that if we have to increase those rates, we will increase those rates. All right. And the next one here is for capital funding. And as I said before, a lot of the free cash is used to supplement the capital expenditures that you get every year, and these are some of the capital expenditures that we had. The slide is an update on these accounts. The capital funding through fiscal year FY, I mean FY '25, has been expended in full, so there is no funding left in any of these capital expenditures through fiscal year '25. Some expenditures included the laptops, musical instruments, copy machines, school buses. So you can see that being able to get this capital every year is really a good benefit for the school district. I've been in districts that that's a real tough thing to try to get some of that capital. So it's really kudos to the town for being able to give some capital to the school district each year. The next slide is for the grants. Grants are another great revenue source for the district, and this slide shows FY '20 grants at year-end. The district was lucky enough to get grants in the, grants for fiscal '25 in the amount of $1,451,562. On the far right side, you see the FY '26 that we've received thus far, and those for FY '26 are $1,126,020, but it's very early in the year, so we do anticipate some more grant funding coming your way. But for right now, that's the update on the grants. Some of the highlights, just wanted to end on a note of some highlights for the fiscal year '25. So the curriculum review cycle for FY '25, it was math, and just highlight that FY '26 is social studies and world language. The FY '25 technology purchases, we were able to get some interactive display panels for the school. We had laptops and computers that are bringing us in line with our student refresh cycle. We had security cameras that have been purchased, and they're going to be installed in the fall. For transportation, we did receive a 77-passenger bus that we replaced, a 29-passenger minibus. For the copiers, we have updated all of the contracts that have expired, and we have implemented a new three-year leasing program for the copy machines. Then for the facilities, we have replaced our facilities truck that was needed to be replaced, and we have upgraded and replaced a lot of custodial equipment, which is why you see the schools looking really fabulous, they do a really great job, the custodians, so kudos to them. That is the update for FY '25, and I open it up to any questions that anybody has? Anyone have any questions?
My question is about the free cash that we're returning to the town. Is there a reason we're returning such a large sum, and can that be used to prepay for other expenditures in FY '26?
The FY '25, once FY '25 ends, June 30th of 2025, those funds get returned to the town. They cannot be used for FY '26 purchases for the general fund. What happens with the free cash is it goes to free cash, and then the town allocates it. For example, it can sometimes be used for the capital. So like last night, we went to the town for that. But those, once the fiscal year ends for the general fund, that money cannot be used for the next year. Grants and revolving is a little different. Revolving funds revolve, so those funding revolve over. And for the grants as well, depending on the dates of the grants ending. So the grants can be used until the end date, so sometimes there will be some carryover in grants. But in the general fund, no, that money cannot be used, it has to be returned to the town. So that would not be my decision on what happens with that money, but some of the things that is, it is used for would be to fund the capital. I'm not exactly sure of, with the Special Education Stabilization Fund that we had, it could have been that they used some of that for that, which was, you know, that was really a great thing for the town to be able to give that, because for FY '26, if we had not gotten that Special Ed Stabilization Fund, we would have been in some trouble. That's $1 million, $950,000 that we would have had to cut from the budget. And in FY '26, we did get, from what the history that I saw, probably the highest percentage increase that you have received. I look back quite a few years for the history that I had in my desk, and I have not seen percentage increases like that that you received. I mean, with the stabilization fund and the general fund, it was 5.67%, I think it was that you got for FY '26, and the highest that I've seen in, I mean, we went for, they wanted us to come in at 3%, but we were able to get them to come to the 5.67% with the stabilization fund. But I hope that answers your question, that money cannot be used for the next year, unfortunately. I wish it could, but it cannot, so.
What was the capital request for the buses? Do you know what the amount is?
Yeah, for the buses, it was $270,000, I think.
Okay.
So.
I was just going to say.
Almost the entire.
It's got to be in the ballpark, so.
Almost the entire amount that we did return. And just to let you know, on those minibus, this year, we had, we have five minibus that we need on the road to transport special education students and some charter school students and the preschool students. And a lot of the months in FY '25, one of those minibus was off-road, it was in repair. And that's kind of tough when you don't have a spare bus, when you really need to transport them. And the preschool's minibus has the, kind of like the safety belt harnesses, so they are required to have those harnesses, so we can't use the big buses for those. So that was really a great thing that I hope is passed at Town Meeting, because we're really in need of those minibus to keep the program running.
This is really anecdotal, but having sat on the budget subcommittee for a number of years, it is very, sometimes you see all these different lines, and it kind of blends together, and this line can go here, but this line can't. Thank you for this presentation, that's the point I'm getting to, because it does sort of bring it, bring it to light, and shines a light on what the budget subcommittee in years past, you know, we've learned how intricate it is, so.
Right.
I know how much work it is, thank you.
The other thing, like I'd like to say on the FY '26 budget, so when we start doing those presentations on the FY '26 budget, then you might be a little enlightened on the difference between FY '25 budget and FY '26 budget.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions, comments on this? No? All right, well, thank you very much, we appreciate the effort that went into the, everything that you do, so thank you.
Thank you.
We are to the approval of donations. Let me look here, sorry. My packet for some reason got mixed up. Here we go, thank, thank you, okay. Looks like we have three donations here, actually, Ms. Sheridan. Looks like we have three donations here, actually, Ms. Sheridan, why don't you talk to us about this?
So the first donation is the Foxborough Touchdown Club is donating $4,000 to the Foxborough Public Schools to fund two of our coaching positions for the 2025, 2026 school year season. So that's a restricted donation to be used for coaches. So that's the first donation. Do you want me to go to the three and then?
These are also, just as background, these are additional coaches. We fund, we fund coaches through our budget, but these are additional coaches that the Touchdown Club is wanting to fund. So this is something that's happened annually.
Good. Thank you. Sure?
I make a motion to approve the Foxborough Touchdown Club $4,000 donation to the Foxborough Public Schools to fund two coaching positions for the 2025 season.
Second?
Any further questions, comments, or discussions? And all in favor of accepting this donation with much gratitude? And that is 4-0-0. Thank you very much. Next.
The second donation, this is a keyboard bench and stand that has been donated by the Kraft family, Partners in Patriotism, and the band Coldplay to the Foxborough High School Music Department. The approximate value is $400. The music, music students of Foxborough High School are very grateful to these organizations for their support for the music program. So that is a keyboard bench and stand.
Okay. This is pretty exciting. Coldplay. That's kind of cool.
I make a motion to accept the keyboard stand and bench, approximate value of $400.
Second?
All right. Who's seconding? Pat or Michelle?
Pat.
Pat. All right, second from Pat. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor? We accept that donation with gratitude, and I feel like that's going to be a popular item amongst anyone who plays a keyboard.
And I've got one more.
Yep.
So this is a tennis practice ball machine, approximate value of 800 to 1,000. This tennis ball machine is going to be used by the high school tennis teams, and it has been donated by Sylvia Segetti. And I hope I didn't butcher that name. I apologize if I have. So that is a tennis practice ball machine. And thank you very much to Sylvia for that donation.
I make a motion to approve the tennis practice ball machine, approximate value $800 to $1,000.
Second?
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor of accepting this donation with gratitude? And that would be 4-0-0 as well. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are on to the appointment to delegate, appointment delegate to the MASC convention. So in this fall, this fall, in November, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee has their annual convention. And in the past, I have attended multiple times, and Michelle has attended multiple times. And Michelle has been so kind the last two years to step up to be a delegate. And she's done that, that voting work on behalf of the committee. I have, last year, we, I had a schedule conflict, so I could not step in to do that. As far as we know, because of schedules and availability, Michelle and I are available to be at the conference again this year. And it's not, the attendance isn't required. We don't, nobody has to, has to go if they can't or can't make it or anything like that. But at this point, if it's appropriate, I would be happy to step up as delegate. I haven't gotten to do the work, and I.
I've done it for two years. I think it's great. I love doing it. But yes, I would like to nominate Sarah Ladani to be the delegate for this year's MASC convention.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you very much. All right, all in favor? And that would be 4-0-0. I'm happily, happily going to take over the role as the delegate. Very excited. Okay, so we're on to superintendent goals. Dr. Burdos?
All right, so it's the time of year where we, just as all educators, we set our goals for the school year. In this case, I am on a two-year evaluation cycle, as you know, so this is going back to the year one, so the formative year. The goals themselves are two-years, two-year goals, but at the same time, there is a goal that is being carried over from the last evaluation cycle. And as we get to the end of the school year and we have the formative assessment piece, it could be that some of those goals are completed or that some would carry over into the next school year. So just as a reminder from your MSA, MASC guidebook, acronyms there. The goals on a whole, they're describing the work of the superintendent and what the implementation of those would be is the district plan and goals, and really leading that work and driving the district forward through the goals of the district's plan. And in this case, it would be the strategic plan that will be one of the goals that you'll see that we'll talk about here in a minute. But all educators have to have a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, either a school, if you're an administrator, a school level or a district improvement goal, and then you might have other goals. But at a minimum, you have to have the professional practice student learning, and in my case, district improvement goal. So the professional practice goal here is to strengthen adaptive leadership capacity by deepening district-wide implementation of equity-driven, data-informed decision-making practices that respond to emerging educational challenges and support continuous improvement across all levels of the system. What does, what does this mean? So when we think about adaptive versus technical challenges that we have, technical challenges are those that are, they have known solutions. You can come in and you can just solve it, it's a known solution. If it's something that it's adaptive, those are particular challenges that require a lot more exploration. They require sometimes experimentation or changes in beliefs or behaviors. And when we think about the educational landscape and how much it's changing and the challenges that we have before us, you cannot continue to do the same things in the same way. So what does that look like in practice? Well, one of the things that I have done is I have applied for a pilot program through the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents for their Superintendent Student Support Network, MSSN. I was accepted into that pilot program and will participate throughout the year. You have to have at least five years of experience in order to have been accepted into the program. It meets monthly, and that is really designed to look at the challenges that we're facing and how we're addressing those and identifying the needs and really coming up with how we're going to meet those challenges. So that's also working with administrators and looking at the data that we have, our achievement data, our social emotional, you know, meeting the needs of all students and what that looks like. It could be absenteeism, it can, it can be our achievement data, all of the different data measures that we have and really identifying what is the need and how those needs change from year to year. And looking at it from an equity lens in that we need to look at our students in special education and the gaps that are there specifically, look at our students that are marginalized, and look at our students that really are not meeting the benchmarks and that we're setting through our common assessments, through state assessments as well. And we have an additional challenge, and we'll hear more about this with MCAS, with the, MCAS not being a graduation requirement. We're going to, we're going to see changes. We anticipate that across the state level of honestly whether students are taking it as serious as they did before, where it's not a graduation requirement. It is not the be-all and end-all for that one assessment. We have many different assessments. I think that we're rich in how we're looking at our students and meeting their needs from what classroom teachers do in all different content areas. But at the same time, really digging into that and seeing, well, where are our gaps and being able to close those gaps for our students. The second goal, the student learning goal, is one that we're really excited about, and that's working in conjunction with a number of other people. This is a superintendent, high school principal, as well as other educators. And that is to implement the Massachusetts Innovation Career Pathways Program. And we heard a lot about the need for this over the years, but also again, from even our parents who are strategic planning process. And that's looking at college and career readiness for our students. We've talked about at this table many times, it's not just about being college-ready. It's about being career-ready and having our students set up for success and thinking early on, well, what might that pathway look like from when they're looking at the courses that they're choosing? And then what are the things that we can do to set up our students for success and maybe obtaining different internships, certifications? That could be in the area of healthcare. It could be in the area of manufacturing. These are different pathways through Massachusetts partnerships with looking at the workforce and what are the needs. So expanding our college and career readiness with students and working with different business partners and providing opportunities, opportunities for internships, but at the same time, going back all the way to the middle school and coupling that with our project Lead the Way, those courses, we are really primed and ready to say, what are the opportunities for students as young as sixth grade to start thinking about different knowledge and skills and helping them with a pathway to design that for them to really find out what they want to do post-secondary education or maybe what they do not want to pursue? So the Massachusetts Innovation Career Pathways, it's a statewide initiative. It's designed to prepare high school students for college and career paths, offering specialized coursework and then hands-on experience in high-demand industries through internships as an example. We have completed an application for a planning grant. We've received that grant. That is then going to be the work of a committee to see what we need to do to be able to provide these pathways and then to implement these pathways. And at the end of the, this year, we want to have one of those pathways identified, and that committee will be looking at, what does it look like in order to do that from the, the schedule of courses, the courses that we already have in place and how we can leverage those and really look at them in an intentional way to overlap, like the project Lead the Way courses with this. And then also working with mass higher workforce to better understand what the needs are within the local workforce and to be able to help students to be able to make certain decisions in their trajectory of courses, and then for us to implement those supports such as career counseling, academic advising, and then again, those internship opportunities. So you'll hear much more throughout the school year on that, but really looking at having those designed pathways for students, that it will go back even to the middle school and being able to leverage some of the work that we've already been doing with project Lead the Way. The third one is the strategic plan, the five-year strategic plan outlining, that's our district improvement plan, if you think about it as a 30,000-foot view. And then our school improvement plans are based off that particular plan. So I have here that it was to be presented by October. Based on our meeting today and where we are and with building leaders wanting to really make sure that we are ready and have had this chance with school councils and the rest of the parents that have been on the committee and the work that we've done, we need to push that to the November school committee meeting. So I would like to amend that one to say by November to complete and present that plan, so that way we're able to make sure that it is representative of all of the voices in its formal, final format. The fourth goal here, which is other, it's ongoing, speaking of MSBA and their senior site visit that we had, continuing that work to hopefully be invited into the grant program for the Taylor Elementary School. And then at the same time, our five-year CIP plan with continuing the work in completing the athletic complex at Foxborough High School. So that is the CIP five-year plan that's been presented in the past, but continuing to work annually and getting things such as the additional bleachers. I had to think about the word for a minute. The additional bleachers at the high school. When we think about the locker room, right now, you know, as, as an example, football, they play. At the middle school, we have two locker rooms there. We don't have that at the high school. So it's continued to be a work in progress for many, many years. We've made a lot of progress with the concession stand that's there, and the turf field is going to need to be replaced. We already extended the life of that. So when we think about the work that's done to maintain that field, it's quite extraordinary with the people that, and our maintenance crew and what they do for that field, but we're going to end up having to replace that field as well. But we have a five-year CIP capital improvement plan for that, but that really is an ongoing goal, but we're hoping to have good news as far as the Taylor School in December. And the other, the last goal here, which is continued, as you know, we have nine different associations with contracts. We had five of them last school year. We had three of them that were ratified, and then we're still working with our educational assistants and our teachers through the collective bargaining process. So that is carried over from the year before. All of those goals, you have the references to the standards from the Department of Education rubric where they need to be aligned to those different focus indicators with that rubric. So you have those that are listed for each of those goals as well.
So just for clarification, the only amendment on this is going to be the November 2025 for goal three, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments? No? I'll entertain a motion because we do need to vote these in.
I make a motion to approve the superintendent goals for the year 2025 to 2026.
With the November amendment?
With the November amendment, yes.
The one amendment.
A second?
Any further questions, comments, or discussion on this? All in favor? 4-0-0. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Burdos. Those are well thought out. All right. Any, if there's no other discussion, we're just going to move right along. We've had a policy subcommittee update, and I made a quick mention. I thank you guys for continuing your work through the summer. Now that we're back to the school year, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee just sent out a fresh, new update list of policies that need to be aligned with the state and just kind of looked at and looked over to make sure everything's, you know, up to snuff. So if you two are still up to the challenge for doing these meetings, which I believe you are, you know, hopefully you'll continue, continue the good work that you guys have been doing. And I just wanted to take this moment to again, just thank you for all the, all the hard work you guys have done. Is there any, are there any questions or anything? Or do you have anything you want to update on?
Sure. We actually had a meeting before this at 5:00 with Dr. Burros, and we actually started discussing those policies that MASC sent over, so there will be things in the future.
Great. Okay. Well, thank you very much. And thank you, Dr. Burros and Dr. Burdos and, and everyone. It's a collaboration when you're on policy subcommittee. I spent a few years on policy subcommittee, and I, I do know it's not, it's not without its merits. So thank you very much for the work that you all have done on this, keeping us up to snuff in regulation. Now we're going to get to my favorite, Meyer Rewards. So somehow, thank you, Karen Sheridan, thank you to Pat, and thank you to Michelle. You, you all have been attending, attending trainings and meetings, and we are at, we're almost maxed out, believe it or not. We're at 6 out of 7% total, so for anyone, I, I should slow myself down. I hate the acronyms. Massachusetts Independent Insurance Association. It's the governing insurance body that we pay insurance to. So if you take courses and do classes and oftentimes, we've had to do webinars online and kind of divvy it up between the committee members to hit our mark, but it's looking like we're really ahead of the game this year. So thank you for everyone's efforts. Your Synergy 911 that you attended, that counted towards it. There's, there's other trainings that Sheridan went to that counted, so we're in really good shape. If you haven't signed up for an online login, you may want to, but it doesn't look like we're going to have to do, knock on wood, that much more work to, to max it out. So we should, should be in good shape. So thank you also to Katie Lang, who works at Town Hall for all her efforts on this. She works tirelessly on this program. It's not just school that she oversees. She oversees every, every town agency to make sure that we're maxing out. So thank you all. We, it's much appreciated, so. We're going to go lastly to community update. We'll start with you, Michelle.
The Foxborough CPAC, in conjunction with the Mansfield CPAC, is going to do another hayride at the Wardsbury Farm, and where you can pick your own pumpkin. They will be doing that Thursday, October 9th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Red Tent.
And how do you sign up for that?
Uh, you know what?
Sorry, I didn't mean to catch you off guard.
I'm not sure if there is a sign up for that, but if there is, check. I'm not sure if there is a sign up for that, but if there is, check the Facebook page, and I'm sure a flyer will be going out soon as we get it closer to the event, so it'll, it'll let you know. We are still in the planning phases of that, but.
I only ask because it sounds like fun.
It is. It was, it was well-attended last year, it was a lot of fun, and we're gonna, so we're doing it again.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Nate?
October 10th, there's a professional development day, and the Foxborough Recreation Department is hosting a field trip because kids need to be occupied that day, and they're going to CCON Grand Prix, which I've been there, it's very fun. They got a lot of stuff to do, so sign your kids up on the website.
Awesome. Pat?
On October 4th, they're meeting at 9:00 AM at the new community center on Main Street for House to House for Heroes, honor and all who served. Basically, it's run by the Foxborough Veterans Department, and they're working with Norfolk County Sheriff's Office, where they're gonna go door-to-door providing essential information and resources to our veterans in town. The website does have, the Veterans Department does have the ability to call, or they have a QR code to sign up. I know some of the players on my youth team are going to be participating in that as well.
Awesome. Oh, thank you. Dr. Burdos?
I think I got it in the update earlier.
Thank you. Dr. Burros?
I don't have anything to add.
You don't want to talk to us about that awesome PD day? No, just kidding.
We do have an upcoming PD day. We're very excited about it and grateful the Rec Department does something for students during that day. But we are deep in the planning of that PD day and making sure that all of our teachers get what they need. We're starting learning pathways this year, and it's, it's been really exciting to have PD series and workshop series that are exactly what our teachers gave feedback on, that they needed for the school year. So it's going to be a great day.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Sheridan? No? Stevie? No? All right. I do want to add one thanks to your recreation update, Nate, because I get, I'm on the email list, and they started a really fun new program. It's, it's, you can boo, you can spread Halloween cheer, you can sign up to boo your friends or your neighbors, it's real, it looked so cute, I got it in my email. So I just want to add on to your, your update. I don't really have any other updates, except that it's September 24th, and I love Sophia, and I miss her so much. She's off to college, doing great, I got to see her last night, but I told her, watch my meeting, and I'm gonna say how much I love you and miss you. So thanks for letting me add that to my community update. Anyway, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.[1790.08][1790.08]